I guess we can call this to order for this is a zoning subcommittee zoning board of appeals subcommittee meeting for Quant 204 and Quanah Power Parkway just to discuss the amenities issues with that project as a reminder if there is anybody on who is not part of the presenting team if there's anyone from the general public there will not be public comment during this chip and I as the zoning board committee members will likely give some sort of update at the next meeting with obviously Brian and Matt and their team making any comments that they wish to do so at that time and then if there is new testimony that night I would suspect that the chair would then open up for a public comment but again there won't be any during this meeting I think that's it as far as housekeeping goes so I guess Brian over to you to start off
Thank you Greg and Chip let me introduce so our team here is I think you're familiar with Matt and John Matt D'Amico John Sullivan also with us is Andrew Hayes who was part of our development team and Ally Sullivan who's part of our development team that has some experience in the amenity type of things that I think we're going to be talking about so I thought it might be best to kind of talk to you guys about where we are kind of recap what we have for amenities on site and I think this I think there might be two two aspects of this and in chip and Greg I don't know if you guys are are in sync on this because my read is chip is concerned with amenities for the residents and probably the public a little bit but Greg your concern is more for the public to have some amenities is that is that right
maybe I guess depending on what the whole package is but yeah I mean yeah yeah and not to take away from the fact that it is a private building obviously understand that so maybe not even public access but just I guess the way I'm coming at it is you know I think since I've been here the building has been basically empty if not empty it was like the data center so very lightly trafficked so the that area even the parking lots on nice days have become open and with the lake being sort of the centerpiece or you know a lot of people go to the crown jewel of Wakefield okay what I wouldn't want it to change to is then the restaurant being the only sort of public area and then people feeling like they can't walk through there even if you know understand where you're coming from with you know no retail stuff like that but don't want it to feel closed off you know that people can only use the public walkway and have to sort of continue through without stopping so that's that's sort of where I come in yes
got it okay well that's good to know so
and I and I would Brian just piggyback on that that's kind of where I'm coming from too which is you know what's being offered what's going to be available to the public where is it in the complex how accessible is it can we make it accessible very much to from a different field from Greg just that it's going to be this beautiful complex and I I think it would make sense from CCNF standpoint not to have there kind of be barriers to entry if you may
okay got it
I think we're pretty much the same
okay well that's good to know so you know
and understanding where things are located and what are their thoughts for the restaurant is it a three meal restaurant or a lunch and dinner place and you know that what what does that kind of look like in their mind I know they haven't leased it yet or haven't even put a shovel in the ground yet but what are they thinking
got it so Matt does that kind of set the table for you a little bit I think it might be help help to recap like what we what we what we already have kind of committed to one amenity so maybe we start there and explain it to Greg and Chip how it works and then we can see how we can evolve to address you know the issues that they're raising does that make sense
I think that makes a lot of sense we have this I put together something here you know candidly with this being kind of not offline but more of an offline meeting than the typical public hearing we can just kind of bounce back and forth or that bounce back and forth and ask many questions as they come up also Ally if there's anything that comes up on your side that I'm missing here or failing to mention I think it'll make sense for you to chime in so
hey Matt one thing to think about that we you know hearing what we just heard that we haven't really talked about in this presentation is and thinking about some of our other projects is how like publicly accessible some of the open spaces and maybe like you know like Ally like we do like on our Brighton project food trucks and all this kind of stuff that happens outside the buildings and we've been I just feel like Matt on this project we've been talking a lot about inside the buildings which we need to do but you know maybe there's some things we should talk about outside the buildings in the landscape that you know we have lots of ideas about how we could program and make the open space you know not just great for residents but great for anybody who wants to come by and really having an opportunity to program some of these spaces so
John you mean like some activities and stuff like that
yeah like movie night or food trucks or farmers markets or those kinds of things are things that you know I think we've done a lot on other projects and you know it's not really a permanent structure so we haven't talked a lot about it here but like I think all that's fair game and stuff we would want to do and maybe there's ways that you we could commit to that to some specifics because it's not like we're gonna build a hot dog stand here or something but like what can we do to bring people to the site because I think we want to bring people to the site not just the residents that live here
so Greg your concern is and it makes sense is that you know we've got this open space and pathway but the concern is it's going to be a feel for the community like yeah I can go through here but I better race through here and get out of here because it's really really private property and you know do I do I don't I have a right to sit down here you know kind of like it it wouldn't be inviting enough to the public that they won't get comfortable
yeah I guess that's the start of it like then you know we were talking about we've talked a lot about what is it the space sort of between the middle that is a building one and two that are towards the lake and how there's going to be a space between them with sort of outdoor seating and stuff like that what's going to go on you know what's that really going to look like is there going to be things like you know public open wifi type of things to allow people to sit there and you know do work on a nice day or something like that by the lake because you know I mean if I could if I could get away from my computer I guess but if I could go out you know rather than my own backyard but be able to do something near the lake would be would be nice so it's not just the pathway but yeah pulling people in and not just making like yeah keep moving you don't live here even though this is the lake
yeah
that's a point that's a point well taken I hadn't really thought of it and that makes sense and by the way I like the wifi idea that's a great idea just as a side note so
well I think we had been talking about you know is there wifi we had seen in landscaping rolling hills to sit on and stuff like that so and that I think is on I'll call it private side the CCNF side so you know is it to Greg's point is that open and is there wifi to connect there and you know that's that's what I think we're thinking about is how does this and one question John how big is Brighton compared to this this is 440 how many units of Brighton
almost 700
yeah okay so where does where does 440 fit into your typical model
it's on the bigger side I mean we've done a project that was 428 in Cambridge one that was 180 Quincy when it's 289 in Woburn another 250 in Woburn our Fenway projects 365 St Gabriel's in Brighton is it's 555 apartments and 111 condos so this is a slightly bigger side but
and for all of these units you think about things like food trucks and rain and okay so to think about it for this project would be a norm for you not an outlier
it's the expectation I don't think we maybe focus on it maybe not enough as we should here but yeah that's the expectation and the standard
okay
I think a lot of this stuff is not is stuff that we envisioned doing anyways kind of regardless of this conversation but we just haven't maybe articulated it well enough but outdoor wifi do these aren't gated communities so I think the three courtyards that we have that are like inside of building three would want to be kind of private like you don't want the public swimming in the pool but you know everything else I think is it's gonna look and feel like you know the public are going to be comfortable to walk around and just like they do today and take their dog and I mean if you go to our Brighton project it's the public just walks through there and it's it's all fair game and it's a little bit more urban obviously but it's that's the intent
yeah so that was going to be one of my one of the questions almost taking from chip is you know he mentioned size he mentioned size of projects but you also mentioned where they're all located other than possibly Woburn they pretty much all seemed city oriented
what did he say Cambridge
yeah I went through the Needham I think you know one that could probably be comparable might be like town wise might be Needham a little bit closer to the city but I drove through there and that was more seeming like a business park than you know sort of center of town yeah no this is kind of me I guess just sort of spouting off but helping me understand
I mean maybe not our project but like Rivers Edge in Medford has a couple residential buildings couple office buildings you know it's on the waters edge is a public park that's you know CCF did the office buildings that were kind of closer to Wellington in the 80s so not our project but someone mentioned that maybe in one of the hearings that that's a good analogy there's a restaurant there too that they added right now
yeah that's right Greg do you mind let me share my screen here
yeah give me a second here can I do that I know I can do it somehow
make him you can make him co-host Greg
is that the easiest way
yeah that's it
there you go you should be co-host Matt now
so let me just I could just I know you guys have seen this a billion times but let's actually be intentional about how we talk about this so just kind of going back even history wise and we spent I spent a year of time with the friends of the lake and one of their biggest priorities here was how can we make you know there's big swapple land from the existing office building and it feels really inaccessible right now you know people park in that parking lot but people aren't really hanging out on that on that area of grass in front of the property it feels like you're on private property even even the parts that you know you see the property line here you can probably see my mouse but you know the property line doesn't go all the way up to water but it still feels like it does based on the current configuration so one honestly one of the biggest things in getting them to kind of support the project and you know be as involved as they have been was the opportunity of setting a precedent in Wakefield for restoring public access to the waterfront and one of the biggest things you know we had one of our earliest iterations with them actually brought Quanah out Parkway in the rear of the site to the front of the site which they ended up not really liking as much and granted not so great to have cars that close to the water but they liked it from the perspective of it was creating a you know some kind of barrier between the or a clear barrier between what is a project and what is public land and that's kind of why this public path came to be and I can kind of then from there talk about some of the planning nodes that come off of that and how that informed the rest of the site planning and you know what how we're gonna try to capitalize on that from like John said we're not in the business of creating gated communities our projects benefit from our residents being able to feel like they're part of the community and vice versa the public feeling like they can come into our communities so you know that just zooming out and kind of zoom further in here so this pathway that we have here company kind of creates that delineation of you know this is you know there's the South Common in Wakefield this is kind of what we're thinking of as as another common on the other side of the lake and that's how this design kind of came to be so we started to think you know as you start to focus into the site we wanted to create this you know this plaza here which is the way you know I'll zoom it even more you can see it kind of has this like rock wall feel to it where it'll you'd be able to kind of sit up there and but it's clear that that's a public path and publics can be walking on that and you know they'll be able to start kind of spilling into the project as they see fit there's going to be no real delineation here that would make you feel like you're not welcome in this area so that's why we incorporated some of the sea wall etc to try to welcome people as the project something that we're also including here which is candidly intended for private use but it's it's going to feel like it's a public patio it's you know we have grills and fireplaces and stuff like that and just you know a lot of seating I do really think that this area this one public plaza is not really intended strictly for the residents but this is kind of where the project really meshes with you know residents in the public really kind of mesh here so we've tried to focus all this on you know buildings one and two of course when you kind of cross this road here you get into definitely more private feeling territory these are we haven't designed that these are fenced in or what I think they are in some cases or at least landscaped in but yeah this is kind of like the coming to be of the project is here so expanding on what John was mentioning earlier and in terms of what we do in Brighton and what we've done in other locations I think what we want to do and if it made the board comfortable we could actually commit to as a condition is some level of community you know we independent of if it's conditioned on the project we want to have seasonal community engagement events that's what we like to do food trucks or you know farmers markets workshops stuff like that that we can host on our site you know it's not only positive for residents it's marketing it's good for the town like it checks all the boxes of good things I think we would plan to see that you know in this area of the site
Matt my one my one comment on that understand first of all I now understand this a little bit better however the seating wall that you have creates a wall of no barrier of barrier right because I'm walking on the path I can't just walk into this area I have to go down into your complex into the complex and come back and around to those seating areas I think maybe it needs to be I get why they're seating walls but maybe it needs to be more of an open plaza that there it doesn't feel like you're like you're you're coming off the path it feels like just more part of the path would be my comment there
yeah we're dealing with some topography things to make honestly part of the reason why there's changes in topography there is to address some of the how kind of stormwater it's funny so much of this design ends up being kind of hinged on how stormwater works on this site so you know maybe there's I think there's probably a way of like you know when when we are you know coming in for our actual final design of the building permit how can you strike this and do other things to kind of there's different wayfinding techniques you can do that actually just bring people into the property give you all the visual cues
that was going to be my question is a sort of non corny way to put a sign there admittedly I'm not a designer or anything so you don't just want a public welcome sign but yeah
I think that absolutely
I was thinking I was thinking the same thing Greg was you know because because I think you know if you're if you're the public walking right and you see this even though it's welcoming you're gonna question it you're gonna say well geez can I really go around and sit there or go in there I don't know and and a lot of people aren't going to chance it they're going to keep walking by so maybe you know it would be like a public welcome sign that you know only needs to be up for like a couple of years to get people used to that concept and then it can disappear
well the other question I have is where where are the public restaurants
so let me so we we had them coming off of the walking path you know we have they're not they're not in that same area we have them over by
could they be could they be in the same area
yeah because people know they can go to the restaurant you don't know you can go over here if you're not pulled in
right that's going to pull people in that's going to be a see to me that's kind of like here's your public restroom here's amenities you can use here's an area that we welcome you to just a thought
I think we could probably I'm just I'm not saying I'm trying to figure out how that we can make this work
was a police station was a police station
we have the police state the police you know whoever calling it the substation the security office over here which is it's yeah it's box out of this corner
well why do you keep talking about what this amenity hub is
yeah and then we can but we can go back and study that comment about how do you make it feel accessible I think one of the ways the landscape architect might be able to help us is with material so whatever materials we're using on the lake path maybe like right now we're showing a different material coming into this hub but I'm thinking that maybe it wants to be the same so that's not a there's not some kind of imaginary or real line up there we I think we can get some more information out of them
totally agree taking notes while we speak here so yeah I can talk a little bit about how kind of this some of this stuff we've already presented in terms of you know part of our planning here is since we have three buildings we wanted again to have kind of this focal point of gravity which is this middle of the site you can even see as you cross the street this is kind of like a raised plinth so that traffic slows down it's kind of a nice pedestrian corridor between all areas of the site and we really yeah really wanted to double down on this idea that all the all you know this is where people come together where whether people are coming together from the public or even within the private amenities and all kind of happens in this you know area here so let's go through I'll be brief about some of these aspects because I know I've touched base on some of them before so as you get inside again these are you know intended to be private areas some of the amenities that we are focused on and we've implemented you know implemented 99% of these into projects we've done in the past and have kind of learned what people do use to learn what people don't end up using and what people obviously expects from a project like this what we're you know a big crucial thing that we'll look to include in this area and especially with the covid impact of the world you know some people are in offices or there's still plenty of people who are working remotely or hybrid work whatever I think having some kind of you know strong kind of cafe feeling you know where people can you know residents can hang out get coffee and you know kind of the similar feeling of why people go to like drive you know I my dad works from home all the time and his biggest thing is he loves trying out different Starbucks which I know it's like very lame in my mind but that's his big thing it's like being being able to do work in kind of a busier place so that's some of our design of what we're thinking I think there's a little old precedent image here you know we try to incorporate some of this into the design of what we do for our projects moving forward is having you know flexible work from home space we're having we have a ton of that planned for this project some other amenities that we that kind of always comes standard we have full service fitness centers we you know you see it here we always have a goal something for this project since I think the demographic here is you know people are we didn't unintentionally pick the lake here I think a lot of people like the idea of living on the lake and it's going to be a more of an active kind of demographic we're thinking so there's stuff that we're including like fix-up centers where if you have a bike or something like that you will have all the materials on site so you can fix it yourself and some of that stuff some of that infrastructure we would honestly we would try to offer to the public in this public area whether it's a bike pump station or similar you know I know we talked about it briefly and we on the Brighton project that we made reference to we have this system called the alchemy system we heard you know that's something that's been successful for us in the past and based on some of the conversations that we've had as a group we wanted to see if we could go kind of further for this project and I know it's still going to sound like a vending machine and I regret that but I I promise you it's actually a lot more interesting and you know we're pretty committed to trying to trying to do it for this project Tulu is this new kind of system basically the idea is that people who are you know living in 600 square foot apartments often don't have every single household item that someone who's living in a 2000 square foot single family home might have but people still need those things at some point in their life so we have you know these Tulu marketplaces which is a system you can deploy where you can rent certain things for the day and it's it's something you know we are really excited to try out on our projects moving forward there's a bunch of different items that you know I guess some examples you can kind of see on screen here is if you didn't you know if you had let's say you needed some tools you something in something in your life broke and you need to rent some tools you don't have power tools in your apartment you can rent them here there's different kind of convenience stuff from like full meals that you can buy at these at these stations so that you know really the bottom line intent is that yeah we want our residents to be in the community that's why we're doing a shuttle but also at the same time just because there's something minor in your life that you need you shouldn't have to be you shouldn't need to get in a car to go do what you need to do so we're trying to allow for some you know whenever there's a convenience thing that you need to be able to do in your home try to provide some of those items on site which is what we thought was an effective way to actually deliver this to our residents
so so Matt here's here's what I'm going to throw at you yeah right nothing separate I keep using my cursor like you can see it separate of the rental tool part and all that maybe that's somewhere else but the high-end vending machines the high-end convenience stuff the the workspace the feel of a Starbucks type of area why why couldn't that have public access why why does that only have to be for residents you know that maybe even if your leasing area was there or because I noticed you listed that you know but that goes back to Greg's comment of going somewhere else and and or even your father finding a different spot to set up his computer you know if if somebody biked or whatever and came down and used that spot or or had access to the high-end vending machines where they could get a water walking around the lake this is exactly what I've been talking about since the beginning of the project with a convenience store I get you can't do a convenience store but you could do a whole wall of really neat vending machines that you could have access to the public for a period of the day you know not 24/7 but maybe it's open from seven in the morning to 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 you know seven at night something like that that that's the stuff I'm talking about is there a way to pull people in that won't affect the muffin shop or honeydew or all that but if they wanted to grab a ginger ale or a water or in that weather come down you know could this and have the bathrooms off of this could this be more of a public shared space
so I have an even foundational question to that and I guess it's probably more for Brian we talked about Brian at the last meeting how like retail and stuff isn't allowed here even by special permit or it's or anything like that are you comfortable that would that this isn't retail even at this level I mean it's it's selling
well retail I think what was on the wood right now Greg I think it's fast food that's not allowed
oh okay well but again I guess again this isn't this even faster than I guess what's if you're comfortable I'm not gonna get I'm not gonna get into the
yeah I think I would be because fast food is something that the foods prepared so the definition of fast food is established with primary businesses a sale of food for consumption on or off the premises which is intended for immediate consumption rather than uses an ingredient available upon short waiting time five to eight minutes and packaged or presented in such a minute it can be readily eaten either inside or outside the premises where it's sold I mean vending machines I think we're fine with something like that Greg I think fast food is more like you know like a Dunkin Donuts or a or you know Burger King type thing within making the food and preparing it
okay sorry just to make sure we can even do what you're talking about
I don't see a barrier to it I think we can figure that out if it's something that works from CCNF's point
yeah so Chip I think it's a balancing act I think part you know just laying our cards out on the table there's some security concerns that we have with letting the public into what is conceived to be private areas that being said I think there are certain design I do like your idea and would want to see if it's implementable is you know stuff like this let's let's use
that's what I said it's been what I've been asking for whether it's a convenience store or the ability to you know pull somebody into a space and I think if you do it I get the securities points and maybe you have an area that's for the public and an area that's private but some of that kind of same sort of higher end vending and I think if if you And I think if, if you put the bathrooms here in this area that were public. You know, you're not secluded them down at the end where the restaurant is. You're pulling people into your amenities area.
Yep.
Matt, can I say one more thing here?
Sure.
Have you, you know, just an idea to bring the public in. Has it been any consideration of bike rentals? Like, you know, those bike stations where you can rent the bike?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, we looked into it for. You know, this is not the right answer, but we've looked into it for our residents. I think those typically kind of hinge on some kind of network. Like in the city of Boston or in Cambridge that they're kind of connecting, you know, there's affiliate locations.
Blue bikes.
Right.
Yeah. So make, what if you, what if we have like blue bikes available here and then there was a place to find them at the, you know, downtown, set it up in downtown Wakefield, in conjunction with the town. So now you've got blue bikes that can be rented at the head of lake and ridden downtown and switched off vice versa. And then that's just.
Bigger either taking than you.
Yeah.
Isn't that, that?
Yeah, uh, well, sorry, I was about.
It's staff, that's, you know, the, these bike shared systems, I mean, bike shared systems, I don't think it's a bad idea, by the way, for the area or for any place. I know, um, even in smaller towns in Western Mass, they are able to successfully implement these things. But they end up having, you know, staff members of the town who at the end of every day run around with a truck. Picking up where the bikes got left because they don't always make it.
Yeah, they, they tried to implement Lime Bike where my parents live and, and it. My parents, they kept calling the town to pick up these bikes. That's not the point of the bikes, mom. So it, it just didn't work.
What happens, Greg? They just leave them everywhere. People when they're done, they just drop.
I mean, even if they're left like. I don't know how you would put it nicely. People don't understand that the purpose of these bikes are to leave them for the next people and. Start saying, why the hell is this bike on my corner? Essentially, my parents were like the old people yelling at clouds type of thing.
I know that there's like brother kind, you know, and talking to Erin Kikinda and her brother kind of TMA goals for Wakefield. I know that maybe there's stuff like that that gets implemented in the future.
Yeah, I mean, that was just, I don't mean, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole. That was just a thought and obviously it's not a good one. So just move on.
Oh, but that could be Brian. I think it's a good one. If we were able to get the whole town and the surrounding towns on it, then it would, you know, might be able to work.
It'd be a good area for it if it happened. So. I mean, I'm just thinking that, you know, if you want to engage the public, you know, you, you, especially like when you get up, you get. You know, people like my age might say, hey, I'd like to ride around the lake, but I really don't feel like, uh. You know, um, riding down from my neighborhood because I'll get killed going across the railroad tracks. I'd like to be able to. Drive down to one of those parking spaces, grab a bike, take a lap around the lake and go home. But, um, just a thought.
John, what are your thoughts on like, if, you know, trying to take Chip's idea and put it into action here? You know, if someone, if we had machines like these Tulu machines, we had some kind of room that. Trying to think of how we'd implement this without. Creating an operational disaster. Um, if we had some kind of room that is. I- in this area that is accessible to the public, but isn't, you know, prior to any of our kind of security doors. And, but also accessible by our residents as well.
I mean, I think you can think about it like the church in Brighton where it's like the front half is like where we have our leasing operation is just naturally. Publicly accessible. So it's, it's not like, like if you're up on the second and third floor and it's like clearly a resident lounge, but I, I think. And it doesn't have to be like a room with a door and a lock. I think i- it, it's just an area that, you know, how it opens up. Onto the outdoor space or how it's programmed on the inside where it can kind of. Do double duty like Ali and I are working with Cafe Nero now. About like, you, we have that church, which is our front amenity space in Brighton. And it's quasi open to the public because like anyone can come in and rent an apartment, but we're adding Cafe Nero. And you're going to be able to, you know, get a cup of coffee and it's all. I don't think the residents get spooked or bothered by the fact that that part of that building is kind of open to the public. So I think we can. I think we could do that. That doesn't scare me too much.
Yeah, and I, I don't think that people walking around that, you know, that were walking along the lake, going in to, to get, grab a refreshment. That's going to be a big deal to question who they are. Um, one other thing that we did at Brighton is we, we have a, a pool deck and we had one of these machines outside. So I think if we could figure out a way to do that as well. Um, that would require some, you know, thought through weatherproofing and, and cover, but. I mean, there's definitely ways to incorporate this so that we can get, you know, the public to be able to utilize it as well.
So Chip, I think the answer is yes, we can figure out a way.
Matt, I like everybody else. I didn't like your first answer. No. You're the no guy. Everybody else. I like John and everybody else.
Matt just doesn't want to say something and just put his mouth.
No, no, and I, and I appreciate we're just throwing stuff, hoping stuff sticks, but. That's really what I've been pushing for from the beginning, kind of. Any of that could be dual purpose.
I think it would change some of our landscape design here. Like I'm looking at the left side of the building one. And you know, where we have those steps, like some of those might just go away. And, and then a portion of that kind of building, just somewhat kind of to the restaurant, like. Opens up and that is the kind of the place where public and private mesh or something.
Yeah. Opens up as in like the kind of the, like glass box type of, not, that made it sound bad. That's not what I'm going for. Uh, is that what you mean by open up like more visible?
Yeah, but also like entrances into the building.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Uh, and then just from like a grading perspective, not having. Barriers. I, I think it's almost like you make it feel like a, a, a re, like using cues from retail. Like so that you walk by and it doesn't feel like you're crossing a fence or crossing some kind of line. I don't know. I'm not a designer, but.
Yep, no, understand though.
We've also kind of flirted with this idea, you know, and I, I think it could work well for this. It's like, kind of, it's almost like a. The ideal situation is like nice summer day. It's a garage door kind of style where it's like it opens up. And then, you know, it kind of has this nice indoor outdoor feel to it. Could be very welcoming.
Yep. Keep, keep running with that. And by the way, Greg, I don't, I don't know how you feel about. You know, at some point we gotta approve this or not, but I'm okay with approving it, knowing that we're going to keep working on. Ideas and how it all finally exactly goes together.
I mean, I guess there's a line to that, right? Like, yes, obviously to the community programming, all that stuff. But. Not to the point like, yeah, we'll think about. Public.
No, there's got to be like a space dedicated and then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, yes. But what the actual.
Right.
Whatever. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it could be a square footage, like a thousand square feet that'll be, you know, programmed and intended for, you know, both private and public use.
Yeah.
For daylight hours or something like that. And then.
Yeah.
We, we want to just have enough flexibility that it takes a long time for us to design these buildings.
Yep.
Uh, we, we, we just don't want to be locked into like where walls will go or what.
Yeah, or even like, yeah, Tulu is great now, but in two years when these go up, I don't know. It's not.
Yeah, exactly.
No, yeah, yeah. No, I'm with, I'm with you then Chip. I think we're on the same page. So. Unless anyone else has anything. So I think coming out of this, it would be. Chip and I, and maybe Matt can make just a quick report at the next meeting and see where everyone else's.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to hear John's idea of where food trucks could end up here. Like where you think they could be positioned.
And we have that, see those, if you zoom into the tabletop between the buildings there, there's like a pole off where the ballers are, go up. I mean, it could be anywhere in this plaza, but there's like those little dots there are ballards. Um, off the road.
I mean, I, I love that idea.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and then, then that keeps bringing the community in. I mean, even, even if you had the sausage guy every now and then come in here rather than be at the far end. Right?
We do that at all of our projects. We, you know, and it's usually wildly, I mean, it's always wildly successful. We, you know, we make those, um. Arrangements months, months ahead. Um, we'll do like little pop-up farmer markets. We'll have local vendors come in and do, you know, stuff for the holidays. So. You can imagine that it'll be very active throughout the entire year for the most part.
But as, when you do that, do you somehow make it open to the public?
We do.
Obviously, if it's a food truck in the roadway.
Yep.
Tough to cordon it off, but do you like advertise it in the neighborhoods and stuff like, hey? Taco nights, Tuesday night down at.
Yeah, absolutely. So.
We could, yeah.
The, the food trucks will do their own marketing through their websites because people follow them and want to know where they're going to be. So, you know, they'll have their, their followers anyway, and then we'll have our own channels of social media. Um, for the site and, you know, we'll definitely want to connect with the community on those anyway. And that'll be a perfect place to get updates for the community on, you know, the happenings that are happening here.
Just for clarification by the sausage guy for people who may be in the city. It's not the actual sausage guy that's at Fenway and all.
No, no.
Fred's Franks, that's right on the, uh, right on the corner there, which is. I think he's there pretty much every day, right?
Oh, all the time. Those are delicious hot dogs. We'll definitely be inviting him to a lot of our functions. Don't worry.
I think it's important to note that this is like. Not like an every weekend thing. This is like an event because what you don't want to do is, uh, you know, in, in. I, I don't think we, we want to create a situation that we're creating competition for our local restaurants, right? So.
Nor do we want to create a place that people don't want to live either. So, I mean, there is a, we understand that it's a balance because we want people to come to Wakefield too. So.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to know which unit you're going to make condo so that I can buy it. I'd like it facing the lake.
Here are the earmark for that. It's on the next plan submission.
Chip, do you have anything else or?
No, I, I think Greg, if you're comfortable, I'm comfortable. I got, I think they heard us.
Yep.
Finally.
Where are we leaving it with, where are we leaving it with the bathrooms?
To me, I think you need the bathrooms near this, this, whatever. We're creating because otherwise, because that's going to be the draw in all reality. That's.
Yeah, I think it's fine. I think it's.
That says, this is your public area.
It's probably more appropriate that way too. Um, so I think we can, I, you know, we have the earmarks over here, but I think we can, yeah, I, I don't see any issue with that.
I think it works better, Matt, if you can do it because it's going to make it a public hub. You know, it's got, it chips right. People, public's going to not know where to go and, and then they're going to learn about everything else when they use the bathrooms.
I agree. I think we, I think we want to, Matt, do some sketches internally so we could better, so we could show this to people next time we meet. Um, and we can add that level of detail. I think it's going to change.
Be able to do that for Wednesday's meeting though.
Yeah, I was going to say we could do, if they are ready, then that's fine to at least preview it after everything else. But if not, we, I think we'll understand, right Chip? I mean, if we just talked about it today, so.
At least we can talk conceptually Wednesday night about it, Greg, right?
Yeah, I mean, depending on how long everything else goes, if we, if, if we have, you know. I guess we can at least tell them what's happening instead of taking comments, but.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, less is any.
I mean, I think our committee, Greg, will be happy with the. I don't know if I'd call it progress, but the confirmation of, of what we talked about.
Yeah, I think so. I think this is the direction everyone seemingly was trying to go. Um, especially around this. And I think what brought it up probably was we called this area in the center here an amenity hub, but didn't really. Discuss it in detail. So I think this has been very helpful.
Good. So we, we can start, you know, obviously we won't be ready for Wednesday, but we can start to kind of draft this up on our ends. I like the idea of like allocating a certain public space area on the architectural plans. So we can, we can start work on that and.
Yeah, I think if you guys internally start thinking about the square footage that you'd give to it. Um. Like, even if you were to conceptually say, yeah, the bathrooms will come up into this amenity hub area. We're going to allocate a thousand square feet, which would, you know, have some tables and vending machines and stuff like that. That will start and. Incorporate. These patios right off the walkway type stuff. I, I think that will give people a good feel.
That makes sense.
Cause I, I do feel like if the bathrooms are down by the, the restaurant. It's there, you're down at that end. Don't come to our main amenity hub for everybody else. But I've beaten that horse, so.
I guess you also did mention at the beginning of the meeting that you want some idea of what we're thinking for the restaurant. Is that worth talking about for a second?
Well, um, so my question was, you know, a lot of my thoughts was, but now that I hear how you're doing it. If you're, I'm a shuttle goer. I'm assuming the shuttle's picking me up at the amenity hub. And I'm assuming one of these vending machines, I'm going to be able to get a coffee roll and a coffee to go. Right? That, that was one of the things I was thinking about. The third thing I would ask is would the restaurant be a, you know, could. The restaurant possibly be a three, a three meal restaurant, you know, breakfast, lunch and dinner. And does that open up the opportunity? To not be fast food, but to grab something to go in the morning on your way out the door. Don't know what your thoughts are, whether, or it's a lunch and dinner or just a dinner place.
Yeah, and we've talked to a bunch of different operators here, um. Who've been interested, at least on a cursory level. I, I don't know exactly what it's going to be. I can tell you that. The people that have been most interested in this space have been more kind of a small plate and brewery type tenant. Um, so, you know, I've had a lot of people say that they'd be interested in three meals a day, depending on the day of the week. So my Saturday, if people would love to do Saturday and Sunday brunch here, for instance. But maybe on a, a Tuesday, they might not want to be open selling breakfast. But I, I think it kind of depends on the tenant. Uh, we'd love to, you know, generally speaking, we'd love to see someone who's a. A, a tenant that is as exciting as something like a brewery. Uh, obviously this, it's, it's itself would not be a brewery. It's on a twenty thousand square foot space, but. You know, an operator that already has a brewery or wants to kind of open up a satellite. Uh, but generally something that's hip and exciting and brings the community in. I, I'd like to see it open three meals a day, um, especially on weekends, but. You know, it's a little bit of it in some regards. A tougher retail space to lease, so I think it's what you can have to see.
Yep. Oh, I think you, once you start building this and they start seeing the proximity to the lake and the view from the lake. It's, you're going to fill it in two seconds.
Yeah, I, and I think we're going to get the right tenant too. Uh, there's some people I wish I could tell you today that maybe in a more offline setting I could tell you, but. Uh, some really exciting folks out there.
If you need to meet the owner of Harpoon, let me know.
Yeah, I was just reading that a lot of, um. Higher end, even like James Beard award-winning chefs are moving out in no- north of the city. So.
Yeah.
If we could go that direction, it would be great.
Oh, they're going to, yeah, it's going to be a winner in there. That's going to be a really desirable space, Matt, at the end of the day.
Oh, you're going to be packed, packed. Even Bellino's across the street, the patio is full all the time.
Great.
All right, um. So I guess that's it.
Great. This was really helpful. Thanks. Thanks for doing this, guys. Really. Helps us out.
Thank you. See you guys Wednesday.
Helps the project and the community out. I'm excited.
Yep.
Thanks, Greg. Thanks, Chip.